And will be used to ensure that the Select Board and the town, of course, has an appropriate, I'm sorry, the Select Board has an appropriate role in the production of the financial statement and the advisory committee's budget that goes into, goes to town meeting. So that's something to look forward to for next week. And the Select Board is preparing their, each Select Board member is preparing their priorities for our discussion at that meeting. Any other updates from the Select Board?
Mike has, Mike has his name.
I have one. I was a substitute for EPW Commissioner Aaron Schut at a meeting of the Greater Boston Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization and got a very interesting look at the way the Transportation Improvement Plan is put together. And there is some substantial amount of money on there for, for Washington Street, you know, a couple of years out. But it was, it was just, I am, I think you know, a transportation geek. And so it was a really interesting and educational sort of thing. And I would encourage other Select Board members every once in a while to sit in on one of the meetings that staff normally, normally represents us and just be a fly on the wall, really. Because you can learn a lot about whatever you happen to be a geek about. So that was a very, very helpful, very useful experience.
A very good idea. And I think someone should make sure the Select Board is aware of these meetings because they are fairly frequently, not just this group, but you know, other groups, other regional or metropolitan groups. John?
Just a few announcements, if I may. I'll try to go through them as quickly as possible. A couple of upcoming events that I think are worthy of people's attention. Google search Brookline Neighborhood Alliance, and you'll go to their website and you'll see that they are having an annual awards night tomorrow night, right in this very room. Another event that I hope people will seriously consider attending is the, what they're calling the Rose Stroll at the Minnet Rose Garden. And if you just visit the town website or look for the Friends of the Minnet Rose Garden, do that Google search, I think you'll find information about the event, the Minnet Rose Garden Rose Stroll on Sunday. And then, of course, mark your calendars for Juneteenth. That's coming up a week from tomorrow. And there's going to be some, some wonderful celebrating going on in Brookline, which you can find out about all of the plans for Juneteenth if you just go to the Brookline Town website. And then I want to say one thing quickly about an event that occurred just this past weekend. The Brookline Community Mental Health Center had a very successful gala for what they call their Kids Fund. And I won't go into the dollar amounts that were raised, they were significant, lot of generous contributors there, a lot of people having a good time, despite the fact that it was held at the Boston Public Library, which under most circumstances is a very special place to have a gala event. But when the air conditioning hasn't been working for two whole weeks, it's a little bit of a challenge. But they rose to the challenge. Everyone in attendance was in a good frame of mind and participated. My colleague here, Paul, and his wife Amy, they were there. I was there with Barbara. And it really reminded everybody of the really important work that the Brookline Community Mental Health Center does. They had a speaker who was a young man of 15, who, if that video becomes available, I'll let people know. It was one of the more inspiring speeches I've heard in a long, long time. So I wanted to mention all those things. And then finally mentioned that the town has a new resource. And our own Tiffany Oliva has had a significant hand in setting it up. It's called the Housing Case Inquiry Portal. And if you go to the town website, you'll see more information about how to use this Housing Case Inquiry Portal to address a whole host of questions that people might have who are dealing with housing issues, dealing with the housing affordability issues, and searching for housing, searching for affordable housing. So it's great to have that up and running. It goes back to an initiative that stems from some, several town meeting members who are very active on this issue. Good for them, good for the town for following through. And the Housing Case Inquiry Portal is now up and running.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Just briefly, thank you Bernard. I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, these are behind the scenes things that we often don't talk about. The public may notice that we, the agenda for this meeting and the packet, if you follow such things, looks different tonight than it has in the past. It's a small change, but it's a very significant change. We switched our system over to a new agenda format and publishing system. And I know that doesn't seem to be a big deal, but it is a very big deal. I know that Kate McGilvery, our IT staff and others have worked very hard to transition us over to that system. I found it to be much more user friendly, and I hope that the public would as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for their work in making that transition. And then I see a number of folks online tonight with the, with the Zoom. And of course, this is our transition, continued transition to the full Zoom meeting from the webinar format. So folks that are participating tonight may notice that there's a difference. Everybody's now visible in the meeting. And that's, that's new for many as well. And I forget when we made that as a requirement, maybe about a month ago, the Select Board did that, a couple of months ago. And boards and commissions are slowly transitioning to that with the Select Board being, including in that. So it's nice to be able to see that everybody is in, essentially in one virtual room together tonight. So thanks to everybody that made that happen.
Okay, anything else? So let's go to public comment. Our new Assistant Town Administrator for Operations Tiffany Oliva will read the rules and serve as clerk to tell people when their time remaining is 30 seconds and when their time has expired. And I will enforce with my gavel.
All right. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. Once 15 minutes has been met, there is an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you are welcome to send an email to the board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And the first person that we have signed up tonight is Donnell O'Neal.
Good evening, everyone. Donnell O'Neal Senior, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four. I'm also on the Advisory Committee. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and a few others in town, Black and Brown specifically. I mentioned this at a previous Select Board meeting. The process of how the town determined who, what, when, and how Brookline was going to sponsor this year's Juneteenth celebration, in many eyes, was wicked, flawed, and unfair. A real compromise would have been having the celebration at Amory Field and not at the FFR Field, where Museum of America's Original Sin still stands. I know those who were shut out of, shut out of participating in the planning of this year's celebration due to the two main members of the Brookline for Culture Group and their personal issues, had us, well, has us in a situation where there, there's going to be an ugly cloud over Brookline Juneteenth, an unnecessary ugly cloud over Brookline on Juneteenth. Good news though, weather permitted, we will still be marching away from the Devotion House at 11:00 AM, same route we've been doing the last few years, down to Brookline now. And if people want to return and come back up to the Florida Ridley, bored and happy to. So I don't, I don't feel it was fair, that the process and what we did to Chaz, our Town Administrator, by putting him in a situation where he had to play referee, determining the who, what, and where, who's going to do what, it just, it just wasn't fair to him at all, or Bernard, in the, in the committee that, that was formed to decide. Now, at a former town meeting, so, so basically--
You have three seconds.
Thank you. It feels like celebrating at the Devotion House or on that field is similar to, let's say Jewish, Jewish folks celebrating at a concentration camp that's still there, that you still see, okay? That's how it feels, to me and others, okay? A Black and Brown Commission would have solved all this. The Select Board was, the Select Board was supposed to do some research on creating the Black and Brown Commission, Town Meeting--
That concludes your time.
--the Select Board. Thank you Tiffany. So please do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker we have signed up for public comment is Arthur Conquest. Arthur, if you're in the room, please approach the station.
Arthur Conquest. Yeah, right, thank you. Arthur Conquest, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I, I sent Chaz a memo. It was June 3rd. I don't know whether he received it. I spoke to him very briefly at one of the concluding sections of Town Meeting and said that I would be sending the email. And I'm a little just concerned that I haven't received the response from my email. To echo a little bit of what Donnell has said, I served on the, on the Opera Committee. And I think that the, the way the monies were divided, okay, as it related to the Black community, was wholly inappropriate. I don't know what we could do, what we can do right now, but there has to be a change in how we deal with the Black community. There's no way for us to have $20 million go mostly to white organizations and very few, very little of the money going to Black people for, okay, Black residents. Now, I used some strong language in my, in my memo to Chaz. And one of the terms that I used was genocide, okay? I was coming over here this evening, and I passed the basketball court. And I saw, I'm going to say 15-year-olds on the basketball court, right in front of Brookline High School, maybe 5:15, smoking reefer, young children.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. What does that bode for those children? And what are we doing, okay, to stop that? How do we, I'm talking about Black men, get an opportunity to work with our youth, okay? And for you to divide that $20 million that we had and deposit it in Black communities with-- with black people, responsible black people. I know that there's some issues, but you've got to be-
That concludes your time.
-to be able to correct that. It's just not fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Conquest-
Yes.
Thank you for the reminder there. I've been working with town staff to respond to your email. We'll get any response to you as soon as we can.
Okay, you know, it's related to Juneteenth, right?
I know, which is next week.
Thank you, okay? Thank you very much.
We do have 20 participants online. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized. We do have someone raising their hand.
We have a commenter raising their hand who is listed as anonymous. We're going to promote them, but we would just remind folks that anonymous comment is not permitted at select board meetings. You must identify yourself when you're speaking, but I think I know who this is and I know them to be good and, and a person who identifies themselves on a regular basis, so.
Oh well, thank you Chaz. I guess you know it's me, Ida Janice Brookline, resident. Good evening, everyone. Well, I don't even know how to go, but it's just a little bit funny, just echoing what Donnell said. Chaz, I'm sorry you got put in the middle of this. I think we spoke a year ago, I told you, it's a lot, it's a lot going on in this town and you don't want to be caught in, in the middle of it. But we are where we are now and we'll continue to move forward. As a young, as a black leader in terms of this generation, we're talking from before the end below, to see the intent, which is intentional, what has been done with Juneteenth to force black people to celebrate on a slave owner's property. Man, that's going to be a cloud you guys can't get rid of. And we know, we all know, every last one of you all know the reason beside the new selector board member, all know the reason why. And you guys keep going down that road, it's not going to come out well. You cannot fight the same people that you are saying you are standing up for. And I happen to be a member of that community and a leader from that community. So however you guys are going to say, think you can circumvent this story of kicking certain black people to the curb and think you're going to come up with your narrative to suit the D I standard, it's not going to work, I can guarantee you that. It's, you can clearly see, and we've seen the situation with APP as well. So we might not say too much publicly lately, but we're planning on addressing that issue, specifically on APP, $42 million. And you can tell the number of black and brown people in the, in this community that benefited from that. Why some people still going around and try to copy programs that we created too. But maybe you're there, you guys could continue doing what you do and, but that has nothing to do with our community. And when the likes of Donnell and us speak, we speak for majority, majority of that community. And I think Bernard, you're well aware, it's just a shame that a black like you are there can guide them, that that is something the black community can stand. Imagine those slaves and our ancestors, if they were to get up today and see what you guys about to do next week. What a disgrace, but I guess Brookline is very inclusive, right? So we'll continue in that narrative and we'll see how it plays out. Good luck to you guys though.
If anyone else would like to speak online, please raise your hand. There are no other participants raising their hand.
Thank you. Okay, next items, miscellaneous items, starting off with approval of meeting minutes from May 21st, May 28th, and May 29th, 2024. Any edits or corrections to these minutes from the select board? Okay, more of approval of the minutes from May 21st, 28th, and 29th, 2024. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac-
Aye.
Michael Sandman-
Aye.
Paul Warren-
Aye.
David Pearlman-
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, we have items, miscellaneous items, 3B through 3L that people have had an opportunity to review, unless you have any desire to pull one or two out, I'd like to deal with them in a omnibus fashion. However, there is one item, item 3-
B?
3B?
That's the proclamation.
I'm sorry, all right. 3B that Mike Sandman has volunteered to read, his proclamation recognizing June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer month. Mike, you want to read the proclamation?
You better go and get it, I'm sorry Bernard. Do you go ahead and approve the other items?
Yeah, why don't you go, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, but we'll, we'll approve the rest of the items.
Bernard, can I ask for one, one comment? I'm hoping that the town administrator, just for the public's benefit, there's a number of questions raised by the community in the past about how we handle the snow and ice budget and, you know, why do we move money around at the end of the year? Aren't we budgeting for it? Are we over budgeted? There wasn't much snow. I'm just hoping you can maybe just take a moment and talk about that.
Sure. So snow and ice is kind of an odd, an odd thing out in our budget in that it is one of the only things the state allows us to deficit spend for. And so paradoxically, what that has encouraged municipalities to do is to budget with the idea that you will spend any contingency or unspent funds in other areas beyond a minimum amount on snow and ice at the end of the year. This year, because of good financial plans by the DPW, the whole DPW team, we were able to cover that without recourse to the reserve fund. We will be covering it using salary savings and other savings that we've identified in the DPW budget.
Okay, and normally this would come out of the reserve fund, but-
Yes.
-also through the cooperation of nature, we, we also under spend.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Cooperation of climate changes that, you know, we enjoy during the winter time, but long term, you know, maybe-
It's not a great benefit, you're right.
Okay, so are you ready Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So a proclamation of the select board of the town of Brookline recognizing June as LGBTQ pride month in the town of Brookline. Whereas the town of Brookline has always had a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, town employees, and business owners within the town of Brookline who contribute to the enrichment of our town are part of the LGBTQ community. And whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of LGBTQ persons throughout the nation and the world, but there continues to be discrimination against people from this community in the United States and around the world, making it important for municipalities like Brookline to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected by this discrimination. And whereas several municipalities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ pride month. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ persons and supporters come together in various celebrations of LGBTQ pride. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQ pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of LGBTQ pride and LGBTQ social movements and activism. And whereas painting the pride crosswalk at town hall further symbolizes the town's celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQ community. Now therefore, the select board of the town of Brookline, Massachusetts does hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ pride month in the town of Brookline and invites everyone to reflect on the ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and further recognizes pride month by supporting the students and employees of the public schools of Brookline who will be painting, painting pride crosswalks outside of various elementary schools and Brookline High School in collaboration with the Gay Student Alliance and Rainbow Club Advisors, which will complement the pride crosswalk at town hall.
Thank you Mike. So I move approval of items 3B through 3L. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac-
Aye.
Mike Sandman-
Aye.
Paul Warren-
Aye.
David Pearlman-
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next, our calendar items. Probationary police officers, I see chief pastors in the audience. Come and introduce four student officers. Who else?
Good evening. Thank you all for hearing me tonight. I'll try to make it brief, but I'm here before you this evening to ask that we move four employees from the status of student officer to probationary police officers here in the town of Brookline. This will be contingent upon their graduation Tuesday morning from the Cambridge Northeastern Police, Police Academy. At that time, they'll have completed the municipal police training council recruit officer course, which began on January 15th, and they'll be certified by the peace officer standards and training or post commission. So first I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Elizabeth Wagner. Ms. Wagner is 25 years old, she currently resides in Boston. She graduated from Norwood High School in 2016 and Southern New Hampshire University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Since 21, she's been employed with us at the police department as a 911 dispatcher. Next up is Mr. Dylan Hirsch, I'm sorry, Dersch. Mr. Dersch is 23 years old, currently resides in Dorchester. He graduated from Hingham High School in 2019 in the Ohio State with a bachelor's degree in criminology. He has served in the Vermont, Vermont Army National Guard since 2019 and was previously employed in retail. Ms. Hermesa De Silva is 38 years old, currently resides in Canton. She graduated from Maynard Evans High School in Orlando and the University of Central Florida with a bachelor's of science degree in 2009. She was previously employed by the Suffolk County Sheriff's Officer as a deputy sheriff, where she served for nine years. And finally, Christian Silva, who's 24 years old and currently resides in Chelsea. Christian graduated from Hudson High School in 2008 and attended Quinn Sigamond Community College. Since 2020, he's been employed like Ms. Wagner as a Brookline Public Safety Emergency 911 dispatcher. These officers will be assigned after graduation, starting Monday, to our training division, where they familiarize themselves with our organization's policies and procedures, our rules and regulations. That training period lasts for about two weeks and is followed by about three months where they'll ride on the street accompanied with a field training officer.
Thank you.
I'd also like to invite the board to, you know, pending your approval, the swearing and ceremony, which will take place across the street tomorrow at 4:00 PM, and their graduation ceremony, which is Thursday morning at 11:00 AM at Northeastern. And I can send the details by email.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? From the select board? Okay, I move approval of the four probationary police officers, Elizabeth Wagner, Dylan Deish, Janesa, Janesa De Silva, and Christian Silva. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyac-
Aye.
Michael Sandman-
Aye.
Paul Warren-
Aye.
David Pearlman-
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing, draft ground floor commercial incentive guidelines, public hearing. These guidelines that are found, okay, we'll, we'll wait for you. The ground floor commercial incentive guidelines that are found on pages 103 to 110 of the materials in the packet are being presented to the select board for review and consideration of both the guidelines and the views of the public in this public hearing. We will take it up for a vote at our next regular meeting on June 25th. But right now, we're just learning about them and, and making sure we understand what's, what is, you know, what we are doing here.
Give us a moment.
Thank you for your patience. I'm Maria Morelli, senior planner in the regulatory division of the planning department. And on behalf of the planning department and the economic development advisory group, Sandy Silk, Ken Lewis, and Marilyn Newman, I'm really happy to be here and I also want to thank you for your support and leadership in the adoption of this provision, the ground floor commercial incentive program, which Fall 2023 Town Meeting adopted as a provision of the Affordable Housing Bylaw. To encourage compliance of this provision, the select board is required by this bylaw to review and approve companion standards and guidelines in consultation with the Economic Development Advisory Board. Last week, we provided an update to the Housing Advisory Board, which endorsed the draft guidelines. One thing that I quickly want to mention, we toggle sometimes between incentive and investment when we describe the program. Incentive is the word that is used in the bylaw. It is something that we would say, we are trying to incentivize investment in ground floor commercial spaces, but the real estate professionals that we consulted with, the word investment resonated better with them, so we tend to use both. So very quickly, the provision of this ground floor commercial incentive program is that under the zoning bylaw, section 4.08, the affordable units are allowed to be offered at a higher household income limit, and that is 70% area meeting in income or AMI for rental and 100% AMI for ownership. And that is an exchange for the investment in baseline ground floor commercial tenant improvements, what we refer to as BTI. This is applicable to any zoning district where commercial uses are allowed or mandated, provided that the affordable units are located on site. Now, the baseline requirement of, for the affordable units in the bylaw are for lower income limits, 50% AMI for rental and 80% AMI for ownership. There's also another provision in the bylaw that those affordable units can be provided at 80% AMI for rental and 100% or 120% AMI for ownership in exchange for a supplemental cash payment to the housing trust. Now, we've borrowed this concept of this supplemental cash payment to the housing trust to have something that really works in mixed use districts. So instead of a payment to the housing trust, the developer would either do the build out or provide an allowance for the tenant build outs. And this really works, works well in mixed use, mixed use districts where you have these reciprocal benefits. I think it just takes a little while. So actually, I think we skipped one. You're right. Okay, one, a few things that I just want to recommend, as I mentioned, the select board is required to review and approve these, these companion standards. And going forward, if there's ever a need when we observe practical application of this provision, if they ever need to be tweaked or updated, the process would be the same, would not have to go to town meeting. The standards and guidelines are enforced by the building commissioner as if they were embedded in the zoning bylaw, and that is stated in the bylaw. We are recommending a target date for this approval of July 1st because the Harvard Street zoning, which is in effect, which is ostensibly functional zoning, hasn't been in effect for a while. Again, this is available townwide, wherever ground floor commercial is mandated or, or So the program benefits, we do want to ensure that ground floor commercial spaces are equipped with infrastructure, and Sandy will describe what those components are and what they look like. This is not a given, so a developer could provide a building without the basic build out for that ground floor commercial space. But what are the advantages of the developer providing there, so at least an allowance toward it? Well, one thing, you know, we, we often see is that those are reduced vacancy periods. So it's a lot easier for that retail commercial broker to attract desirable and lucrative uses like restaurants. Often, if you have venting to the roof, if that is already provided, or if you have trash rooms that already are sized to accommodate trash within doors and not dumpsters outdoors, there's going to be a better impact on environmental health if you can be proactive about that. This also notably reduces- This also notably reduces hundreds of thousands of dollars in upfront costs that these businesses do assume. So they are the ones responsible for the build outs. They're not developers, uh, often. This is not the business that they're in. So there is an advantage to the landlord providing it or providing an allowance toward it. This tool also gives landlords a financial buffer. So retail is very cyclical and in a weak market, you do want to be able to attract desirable tenants. If you have a tool that allows you to provide those affordable units at a higher rents, that's going to improve the bottom line for that, that project. It'll make it easier to negotiate and offer more tenant improvements, uh, to a desirable, uh, let's see. So that's in, also in exchange, I mentioned that we're saving or the potential tenant is saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in upfront costs. They can put that money in their businesses. And in exchange for that, that is really, you know, such a, a huge thing to be able to offer that they are willing to, to pay higher commercial rents, um, in exchange for that upfront savings. And what that does is it improves the commercial tax base. Uh, it also helps the landlord improve their bottom line. And one of the aspects of this reciprocal program that we're really so proud of is that we are able to expand the offerings at different household income levels. So there's a big jump between a fifty percent A M I unit and an eighty percent A M I unit. Well, what about all of those levels in between? By, by providing, um, or to really stimulate affordable housing units at seventy percent A M I, um, we're really going to expand workforce housing, which still needs to be subsidized in Brookline to be feasible. Um, that is going to expand the customer base, especially within walking distance of these amenities. So now that I've provided a general framework, uh, Sandy will provide concrete details about the requirements and compliance standards and then, uh, um, Ken will provide a financial analysis as part of our due diligence.
Can we ask some questions before that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess one question that I'm gonna throw out to, and see what, see where it comes out. Um, so we're, we're allowing seventy percent A M I, uh, with, with this build out.
Yes.
I mean, that's not really workforce housing. That's really low, I mean, it's, it's not town employees. And I wonder why you didn't go higher. Uh, I know that they, they can with a payment, uh, get it up to a hundred percent, which is closer to, you know, real workforce housing. But why, why didn't you go up higher without the payment? I mean, it'd be beneficial to us as well as to the developer.
Well, there are a couple of reasons for that. Uh, number one, we do provide the one hundred percent option for ownership. And remember that. So if seventy percent.
In my opinion, ownership is not really, you know, what, what, what we're looking for in Brookline. And we don't have very many ownership, uh, projects. I mean, just a couple. Um, and, and it's really rental that, that, you know, is gonna bring in housing for our workers and, and other middle income people.
So you're right, some people will officially think that the band, like seventy to a hundred, a hundred twenty percent is really what you would say solidly is workforce housing. There are, there are camps that'll say that anything above fifty percent A M I is workforce housing. It really runs the gamut and there is a need for every single level. We, we have so many huge gaps in the affordable housing that we supply. And our, our housing production plan has made that very clear. But more, more to the point, we consulted with the Housing Advisory Board, which was not willing to provide this kind of break, if you will, um, for anything that was really close to market rate. And that was the real reason of why we were given the limit of seventy percent, um, A M I.
Oh.
Bernard, you had, you asked a similar question that I, um, was gonna ask. So first, thank you for the description. Is there anything in the bylaw that restricts us to go higher? Or?
So the bylaw makes it very clear that it is capped at seventy percent A M I.
For rental.
For rental and.
It's not eighty, it's seventy percent.
That's correct.
Okay. So if we wanted to go higher than seventy percent, we'd have to change the bylaw.
Yes, you would.
Okay. Bernard?
Yes, Mike.
So, uh, it is possible to go higher to eighty percent or one twenty, a hundred twenty percent, you know, with a payment to the housing trust fund.
Exactly.
Uh, what's the na, how, how does that work economically for a developer? What is the nature of the, is that, what's the formula basically for determining what that payment is?
Right, so the, the formula is for the, the supplemental cash payment, if it's rental, it's four percent of assessed value as determined by the assessor. And for, uh, ownership, it would be, if it's the one hundred percent A M I, it's six percent of assessed value. And for one, the one hundred twenty percent tier, uh, that would be eight percent of assessed value. So I also just want to make it clear, we do have this provision in the bylaw for workforce housing, which provides that eighty percent option and the one hundred and one hundred twenty percent for ownership.
Right.
So this is just another tool in the toolbox.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a follow up to Mike. Are you?
Um, not quite.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to, uh, so I'm calculating in my so-called brain that, that, um, so if you have, uh, twelve units and you're making an eight percent payment, basically you're effectively putting aside enough money for an additional unit somewhere else.
That's right. It goes into the housing trust. It can go toward a one hundred percent affordable housing project and.
Okay, I want to get a sense of how many and you'd, you'd need to have the twenty four units in order to get a four percent, to do the same thing with, uh, four percent. Okay, thank you.
Well.
So I just wanted to follow up on Mike's question. So a developer could choose to go to seventy percent A M I for rental, we're just talking about rental now. And that money would go into the.
Ground floor.
The ground floor commercial investment. Is that what we call investment?
Absolutely, yeah.
But they could still go higher if they wanted to by making an additional payment to the housing trust.
They can't combine the two.
Oh, they can't.
That's right, it's either one or the other. So they have to provide those units at a, at a fixed house, household limit.
Right.
So again, that is an option. If they wanted to go with the eighty percent, uh, A M I, they would have to make the payment to the housing trust. And this kind of makes sense, I think, when we get to Ken's portion, because his due diligence was really a financial analysis getting in the mind of the developer, looking at these three options, comparing the fifty percent, the seventy and the eighty, and the other variables they might use to say, well, what do I need for a feasible project? So there is a little bit of pain involved for the developer to do the seventy percent A M I, uh, which we, which is why we structured it uh, the way, the way we did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Paul, um, David.
Yes, you, you mentioned the importance of having these different A M I bands.
Yes.
I'm wondering if seventy is the cap and realistically everyone's going to go for the highest they can, then how do we encourage it at fifty, at sixty, et cetera?
Right, so number one, um, we can't already assume that people are going to the eighty percent. So remember, if you have a project with, uh, four units or more, the affordable housing bylaw kicks in. If you have a project with four to ten units, you can make a cash payment, uh, instead of providing those affordable units on site. So at eleven units or more, fifteen percent of those total units need to be on site and they need to be provided at fifty percent A M I. So the one way to ensure that we are triggering or applying this bylaws to ensure that our zoning is functional to allow for, you know, multifamily buildings or mixed use buildings. So that, that's a given. You have to do the fifty percent A M I. We don't see a lot of options. We don't see a lot of developers opting for the eighty percent A M I, um, the supplemental cash payment. So what we're hoping here is that often you do that ground floor commercial. If you are in a premium, where you're getting premium rents for retail, that retail is going to be highest and best used like Harvard Street. And, and folks are going to want to have retail on the ground floor to make that project work. So they have an option to think, well, do I want it? Because I might be negotiating with this desirable tenant. Why not get rewarded for what I would be doing to attract this tenant? I could have those units instead of fifty percent A M I, I could have them at seventy percent A M I. So that's the reality of how negotiations work, um, between like a developer and a tenant. And we're taking advantage of that and saying, if you're doing it anyway, let's reward you with some higher, um, higher rents. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
John, did you have your hand up?
Well, I, I do have a question. What is, what is the problem we're trying to solve here?
Yes. So our ground floor commercial, um, by having, we can't always assume that there is going to be permanent investment in that infrastructure and it'll be a lot more clear. Like right now, we have this, this slide Sandy will be taking over from here and you'll see the, the coal show in the white box. You'll understand it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that sometimes a small independent business owner is absorbing, has to provide that upfront, not the developer.
Okay.
So, so if we really want to attract small, independent, unique businesses, we have to do something to help them. And developers don't necessarily have this extra money or this padding to do that. So we have to understand in a weak market, we're going to have to provide a financial benefit. The town isn't providing the money, so let's provide some flexibility in our regulations, especially if we also want affordable housing.
Okay.
In those projects.
That really helps me. I, I hope it helps others who are listening. So, um, if I may, just one more kind of clarification of all of this. So is what, is what this is all about, um, is a trade off of housing that's a little bit less affordable for, um, a greater likelihood that a developer will be able to build out the commercial space on the ground floor?
It's, it's, I don't want to call it a, a trade off because we have a need for it. So we, I want to make it clear that we are not undermining, um, those lower income household tiers. So one way to think about this, and I don't mean to answer the question in a roundabout way, but, you know, we hear of stories of families who have like a fifty percent A M I unit and they improve their household income. And they have to think about, do I take this better paying job and then lose my affordable unit? Because they can't keep that unit if they're improving their household income. So we want to make sure there's the continuity of affordability. And that's why we're, we're looking at this natural, um, kind of negotiation that happens in real estate and providing that flexibility in the bylaw.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
When you say continuity of affordability.
Yes.
And then use the example of, uh, a family that has an opportunity to get a better paying job. How does that help that family?
Well, yeah, this is about supply. I know it's, there's not enough for every need and we are still using lotteries, which doesn't seem fair.
So that's not really helping that family.
It might not be helping that family, but it's help, it's really addressing the problem. So keep, keep in mind, we need affordable housing for different household types. We, and we need them for those different household income levels, fifty and eighty percent, there's a huge, that's a huge delta.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Sandy. Sandy, it's, uh, it takes, there's a little lag. Okay.
Good evening, I'm gonna spend a little bit of. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time just walking through exactly what we're asking a developer to do. So you can kind of understand a little bit of the nuts and bolts of the, of the program. So, uh, this particular slide illustrates two different examples. The one on the left is to Brookline Place, which is still vacant on the ground floor of the retail. And the one on the right is, um, built out space at the Brookliner. We, we use these not because we've had long conversations with these developers, but really because they illustrate the vast difference between build out and what developers are doing today. They kind of do what they've decided that they're going to do. They're not really guided and there's no standard necessarily that they have to deliver a space to but for meeting kind of health and life safety, um, requirements in order to get a temporary certificate of occupancy. The space on the left doesn't have, most likely does not have the electrical distributed throughout the space. There's probably a conduit for the electrical, um, there is gas to the space, um, if it has gas. There is, um, there's water to the space, again, not distributed. And there are baseline sprinklers upturned to protect the floors above, um, because there's nothing in the space truly to protect. It usually doesn't have a finished floor in it. It could have a gravel floor if there's nothing below grade. So it's a very raw space condition that's acceptable to meet those T C O requirements. What we're really asking a developer to do is upgrade their space closer to the, um, space on the, on the right. What that really entails and includes is significant improvements, um, relative to actually bringing electrical and plumbing to the space, dealing with fire alarm, security issues, um, getting H V A C into the space, building out any demising walls, finishing walls. And for restaurants, uh, we have a threshold of, uh, contiguous two thousand square feet that we are calling to be restaurant ready. So there's a, an added layer there. And the goal here is really, as Maria was saying, to put the onus on the developer to even the playing field between what's called first generation space, which is brand new space that's never been occupied and second generation space, which often in a town like Brookline is in much older buildings. So maybe not be great, but it's already built out and so therefore may be a little more attractive to a, to a retailer or a new, a new operator. So we're, our goal on E D A B specifically was to say, how do we help keep our retail areas more vibrant? Is there something we can do to support the retailer, um, and the developer in that conversation? In a, in a, a time of rising construction costs. The ability to use the, um, program as Maria was describing where we're, um, the developers getting a benefit in exchange for this investment in the ground floor kind of neutralizes the impact to the developers pro forma while also providing, uh, enabling the town to meet two really important goals.
Right.
The.
Yeah, Mike?
Sorry, I have, I.
Yes.
Just one, one quick question. It, it's not the most important question of all, but since I've already started. Does the, the space on the right in, by Washington Street in Brighton is in Boston. Does Boston have, uh, a, a requirement for a white box because?
It does not. It does not.
So it happens to be this developer has chosen to do that for their own purpose?
Correct. And, and there are developers in Brookline, to be honest, that are already choosing to do that, but not everyone. And so in the vein of, in a changing retail landscape, in the, and in the vein of E D A B, looking at what could we be doing and supporting to really support our retail nodes and commercial districts? This was a tool that we really, um, honed in on. We don't know of anyone that's doing this. Um, I'll note that I've mentioned this in, um, my, um, day job as a developer to other communities where we've, are talking. And it's gotten a lot of interest of people saying, hey, I can't wait to see this. That's not, neither here nor there, but it's just to say, we, I have not heard of this, um, type of program where it really kind of supports the retail in, in that changing landscape.
And does this, is there any requirement to put venting in or the potential for venting for, for a restaurant? Because, uh, the restaurant build out is probably the most expensive.
Correct.
Build out that there is.
So we are, in, within the vein of this program, there is. So once you hit, uh, contiguous two thousand square feet, you kind of trip the threshold of requiring restaurant ready, which means we want to vent it up to the roof, um, and a grease trap planned for, um, making sure that electricity and other utilities are sized appropriately for that use. Because trying to do that after the fact is much more complicated and expensive and you're not going to be able to run the venting you need up through units. So it ends up out on the street, which truthfully in a lot of our commercial corridors is not ideal.
Yep.
Well.
Thank you. And the restaurant was where I wanted to go, Sandy. So restaurant ready means even if it's gonna be a bookstore, if it's two thousand square feet, you're gonna stub out, you're gonna do those three things. The risk of people coming in at eighteen hundred square feet because they don't want to have to go do that?
We definitely identify that risk, right? And kind of know that we have to draw a line somewhere. We did have a lot of conversations. One of the things I'll talk about in a minute is the due diligence we did in talking with brokers and lenders and existing developers that are doing work in Brookline and kind of felt, um, in those conversations that when you get to two thousand square feet, you're really at the point where people are having sit down service and needing, um, a, a more robust restaurant build out. You might get, uh, um, you know, somebody who is bringing in food from another, um, commissary type location in a smaller footprint. So we felt two thousand was, was the, the right number.
Do you, do you have a sense of the average square foot for retail versus restaurant? When, when, when does that kick over? Do we know that?
I don't. I mean, I don't, I don't know that there is such a thing. I mean, I can tell you from my own experience with mixed use projects in Malden, which is not Brookline, but similar. We have, um, we literally just are in talks about demising a space where two, that the two thousand square foot spot is going to a restaurant that requires this level of venting. And a bubble tea is likely going in adjacent to it in fifteen hundred square feet. And they do not require the. And they do not require the venting or grease trap. They may, we have gas there, different, different community. So they, they require less. So it doesn't, restaurant doesn't necessarily mean not food service, right? There, there are different levels of food.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, David.
Now, the two Brookline Place example, that's not a residential building. So what kind of incentive would be offered so that they would have a build out similar to the Brighton example?
So in this particular case, that was just used as an example. This program, as it's written today and approved in the bylaw, is really designed for mixed use residential buildings. If we wanted to do, look at something, commercial buildings, we'd have to do that separately.
Okay.
Right. So just to kind of continue, a, a key element of this program is that as we kind of talked it through and really identified what we were trying to do here, there's some, there's some disconnects, if you will, between the timing that a developer is going through a process and delivering space. And when retailers or tenants are typically taking that space and building it out. In order to address that disconnect in timing, we have it provided for a procedure with a letter of credit that a, that a developer will provide when they go in for their building permit. So the, the way this program is structured, kind of the mechanics of it are that a developer says, raises their hand and says, I'm going to use the GFPI program. I'm going to provide plans that show this baseline tenant improvements as part of my building permit submission. They are going to provide estimated cost from a contractor specifically for those improvements, which are provided on a spec sheet and an affidavit from both their architect and mechanical engineer to speak to those things. These are very typical things in a development process. The thing that's less typical in this type of process, but is used in 40B processes and others is a letter of credit. And the, the point of the letter of credit is once the horse is out of the barn here, relative to them getting their first affordable unit locked in at 70% AMI, we don't want them to not be able to put these improvements in. We don't want to have to change affordability. So the way we have protected against that is that a developer will provide the town with a letter of credit in an amount that's equivalent to the supplemental cash payment that's required for the 80% AMI. This letter of credit locks them in for this program. Then they have two choices as they come to kind of the implementation of these improvements. The developer can either build them out themselves or they can provide the new tenant with tenant improvement dollars that are sufficient to cover the cost of these baseline tenant improvements. And then upon completion of those improvements, whether they were done by the developer or by the tenant, there is an affidavit provided, again, from the contractor and from the architect confirming that those are complete. And the town will then release the letter of credit. So that's the surety, if you will. So in the event a developer never does those improvements and they've leased all of the affordable units at the 70% AMI, the town still has the ability to say, okay, we're gonna, we're going to monetize your letter of credit now. And so the town's protected. So this is a really critical component. And we did walk through this with our diligence. As I noted before, we spoke to developers, lenders, brokers and tenants. And then also Maria spent a good amount of time working with the town. And we had several Zooms with town council, the building department, housing staff, et cetera, to kind of walk through each of the components of this, this program to make sure we got to the right spot. Ken and I worked pretty in depth on a lot of financial analysis. And I'm going to give huge kudos to Ken for really taking it to the finish line to make sure we kind of really thought about some of the pros and cons, including Mr. Warren, your comment about what's the right size for that commercial space?
So I'm very familiar with letters of credit, but I think the best way to explain this to the average person is probably to say that this is similar to an escrow. And so I'll say that.
It is. And I'll be honest, we talked about an escrow early on, but we wanted to simplify it on the behalf of the town and simplify the need for agreements, which is why we did the letter of credit.
It also makes it, I was assuming that the developer can get, can get a letter of credit from the bank without actually putting money in.
Exactly.
Depending on, it may actually make it easier for them.
Right. The cost of a letter of credit is roughly one to 2% of the cost of that they're.
Yeah.
Protecting.
Okay, let her finish.
So just to quickly sum up on my part before passing off to, to Ken, we had really good conversations as part of this due diligence. We spent a couple of months doing it. We got feedback from the developers and the lenders and the brokers that they felt this was a feasible program, that it would be attractive to both tenants and developers. Lenders felt like it didn't create any undue challenges in the lending process, which is something we wanted to make sure we weren't, we didn't want any unintended consequences here of making it more difficult for things to happen. We provided flexibility, which the developers really liked, that they could either do the build out themselves or pass to a tenant. And so that can work differently for different developers. And that we've also provided protections for the town relative to compliance while minimizing the need for staff engagement and oversight. There, there's, there's no big checklist that a staff member has to go through. That's all managed through affidavits.
Thank you.
I'm going to pass off to Ken and let him walk through the.
We'll try not to ask too many questions so you can get through your presentation, but.
Sounds good.
No guarantee.
Right. So.
How do you open the floodgates early?
Well, I think this is an important issue that we have to understand. And, and yeah, there, there are aspects to it that, you know, I may be a little uncomfortable with.
So, so one of the key tasks of our working group is to quantify how the ground floor commercial incentive program would compare to the other two options that Maria outlined earlier for the provision of onsite affordable housing units under different development scenarios. In fact, looking at, you know, scenarios in which that might be the preferred option. To, to do that, we created a development pro forma that's based on a hypothetical 10,000 square foot site on Harvard Street. The development program is consistent with the Harvard Street, Main Street District zoning bylaw amendments that were passed last fall. That includes a mixed use four story building under the maximum building height of 48 feet. Ground floor commercial space with rental apartments, although it was noted that this program is also eligible for condo ownership. The parking is assumed to be within the, at grade within the building podium. We did not assume underground parking due to the cost or surface spaces due to the setback and open space requirements under the bylaw. So this resulted in a three by three matrix that we set up. So we have the three options to supply for the developer to provide the onsite affordable, as noted. The baseline requirements is 15% at 50% AMI rents. The supplemental cash payment into the affordable housing trust is equal to 4% of the value of the residential units. And this is then provides that the developer, the ability to lease at the higher rent schedule, the 80% AMI. And then the new program here, which is in, in exchange for investing in first generation tenant improvements up to the minimum standards, the developer can lease the affordable units at the 70% AMI schedule. The three development scenarios we, we set up were for three levels of commercial space at grade. It's been described by, to me, by an architect that designing a mixed use building is a battle for the ground floor. And I think this is a good example of that where you exchange the more commercial space you can put at the ground level, the less available for the residual for parking and residential use. We also wanted to note, this is a comparative analysis. It's not a financial feasibility. Right now, four story mixed use buildings in most cases are not financially feasible due to a high in construction costs and high interest rates. The metric we used was the adjusted fair market value, the capitalized fair market value at stabilized occupancy. This is consistent with how the bylaw treats the supplemental cash payment option, where you establish based on the net operating income and a market capitalization rate, you establish the value. And in this case, then we would then deduct the initial capital outlays that a developer would have to make to create the comparability of the three options. We did not include a 10 year hold period or other parameters that a developer might use in evaluating this option. Some of them may be focused more on looking at the long term relative to the potential divergence of rents between the 70 and 80% AMI. The, so the results of our analysis, a couple of key things is that the difference in the adjusted fair market value of the three options is pretty marginal. And I think that's by design with the negotiations with the HAB and, and EDAB and others on, on how these programs would be, would be set up and, and the differences provided for the affordable housing. But it could be meaningful when you look at minimum threshold returns for return of cost, return on equity, or even debt service coverage ratios. But it is important to realize that there is a marginal difference. So we need to keep the, the guidelines user friendly. Can't make it too complicated. Now, another point was that the adjusted fair market value of the supplemental cash payment in the baseline is roughly equivalent in our analysis. And this is by design. HAB wanted to create an indifference point when they priced out the supplemental cash payment. And they succeeded in working with their consultant, Pam McKinney, a few years ago. And, and that, that provides this payment into the housing of affordable housing trust and also allows for more affordable, more potential workforce housing. It is important to note that the ground floor commercial incentive had, had a higher adjusted fair market value than both the baseline 15% of 50% AMI and then the supplemental cash payment. That's primarily due to the fact that there's a significant low, significantly lower initial cost of the ground floor and tenant improvements than there is for the supplemental cash payment. A couple of other programs were, as was noted, this is really a program that encourages investment in commercial space. It's not likely to incentivize the expansion of commercial space in areas that do not support premium rents. First of all, it was noted by Maria that premium rents are accretive to a total investment returns. A quick example of that is the apartment rents that we're using in our analysis. Averaged about $52 a square foot, per, per square foot on a gross basis. But when you net out operating and taxes, that nets to about $35 a square foot. And that's significantly less than the $50 to $60 that developers can get from, for prime commercial space. A second point is that most, many of these locations are already in, in areas that mandate ground floor commercial space. So this could provide some incentives for those marginal areas that permit ground floor commercial uses, but don't mandate them. And then, so finally, we just note that this has some broad benefits for the town. This, we think the shortage lease up periods have a chance to enhance our commercial area vibrancy. They would likely improve commercial property tax revenue. And as noted, they would reduce logistical barriers for first generation space for smaller independent operators. So this is the, this is, I know this is difficult to read. This is our three by three matrix here, and you can see in the yellow, those are the three different scenarios for commercial space at grade. Excuse me. And then here's the results of our analysis showing the different variations in the adjusted fair market value. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to Maria to go over the, the next steps.
Okay. And before you go, Mr. Warren is going to leave you, not because he doesn't want to hear your presentation, but he has a prior engagement.
Okay.
So to quickly wrap up, on May 6th, the Economic Development Advisory Board did endorse the draft standards and guidelines, as did the Housing Advisory Board last week. This is the first, I understand, perhaps a two part. I think you'd like to have, you know, a session before you actually vote. So we are scheduled two weeks from now, unless you decide otherwise. And again, we are encouraging a July 1st, a publication date. Keep in mind that the select board can make changes to these standards and guidelines without going back to town meeting. So as we observe the application, we're able to pivot and be a little bit more nimble.
Right. Yeah, I don't think there'll be a problem with us voting on 25th on these. I did want to give the board an opportunity to just digest, you know, this program. And you make sure that we're comfortable before voting. And I, I think it's July 1st because that's the beginning of the fiscal year. So, so that's, that's our, sort of deadline.
Thank you. And we're glad to answer any questions in between.
And this is a public hearing, so let's see if there's anyone in the audience here in the select board room or on Zoom that would like to speak and.
As you heard before, please raise your hand using the hand raising feature if you'd like to make a comment during this item's public hearing. And there are 15 attendees and no one is using the hand feature.
Yeah, I don't see anyone in the audience interested in speaking, not even Regina. Okay. So I'll close the public hearing. And as I said, this is not something that we're going to vote on. So thank you. I'm sorry, John?
Well, I, I was kind of assuming when they finished, we could ask a couple more questions.
Oh, sure.
Is that possible? I mean, yeah, I don't want, if we've got an agenda that we have to get to.
No, no.
Okay. All right. Just getting back to the original question, you know, what, what is the problem we're trying to solve? When I think about our, you know, current state of affairs in our commercial districts, I picture some legacy properties, some of which fortunately still have active commercial use of their commercial space, some of which have had a vacancy for a while, maybe. Is, is this going to help them?
Now, this, this is really for a new, new project where you're going to be building new housing.
Okay.
And then there's going to be commercial below. So the, one of the reasons why we're calling it an investment program, this investment program could have other prongs. So this is just the beginning.
Okay.
Of how we can address different scenarios.
So follow up to that first question is we also have kind of stacked up, kind of like planes, you know, getting ready to take off at the airport, quite a few 40B projects, which assume commercial first floor. Is this going to help them by permitting them to go back and reconfigure what they're proposing to do?
Well.
So that they'll no longer be stacked up, but will actually build?
Right. So anyone who holds a 40B permit and has not received a building permit, they haven't exercised that, they could consider this. And there are developers who have even talked to us, you know, should I build that four and a half story 40B or should I do the four story project under the Harvard Street zoning? And so sometimes it is a discussion. We haven't had anything definitive. There are three permitted 40B projects on Harvard Street that haven't sought a permit. I will say, just to manage expectations, if you have a permit for, you know, five story building or six story building, that's a lot of square footage. So this is probably not going to be competitive enough for those projects.
Okay. And my final follow up, I promise, is are there developers sort of knocking at the door to develop in Brookline? Who have said, you know, I'd love to develop in Brookline, but every time I do the numbers, it just doesn't work out. But it would work out for me if I could go to 80%, you know, AMI in the, you know, to rental part of my development in exchange for me building out the commercial space.
Well, you know, it's funny, but in our due diligence and talking to developers of, you know, all sizes, it's a very, it's really unique to the project. It depends on if you are like a buy and hold developer. It really depends on your investment values. Some who are going maybe to hold it for longer periods might want the 80% AMI. We haven't actually had too many people, you know, exercise that option. And I don't know why, but they have that option if, if they, if they want to. So they could provide the ground floor commercial build out in exchange for 80% if, if they wanted to. But for those developers who think that it's too much of a stretch, and again, it really depends on the weak market.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, Mike.
I understand perfectly that the current combination of, of interest rates and construction costs. costs is, is a problem certainly for, for developers. But I think this is a question for Ken. If you plugged a lower interest rate in, an interest rate that was certainly not, not down at the, in the, in the basement, the negative numbers almost that we saw a couple of years ago, but, or three years ago now, but somewhat a lower number, do we get to the point where four stories is financially viable?
You come to the mic. Wait, Ken, you need to come to the mic so that our vast TV audience can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So you know, I'm gonna hand that off to Sandy, who's.
Okay, that's fine.
Partner at Jackson Apartment.
I, I spend my daytime building multifamily or in this current market, trying to figure out how to make a multifamily project work. I would, I would actually say that one of the early sensitivities we did on this financial model in the early days was actually to sensitize it to interest rates.
Yep.
And the scale of these projects is such that they are hypersensitive to interest rates. At today's interest rates, nothing works. When you get back to, you know, interest rates of 24 months ago, things start to work again. And so the, to kind of answer your question and answer Mr. Van Skoyek's question as well, a big part of this was, what are the tools we can add in to the town to make us more competitive, more attractive, and to maintain the vibrancy of our retail districts? Things either go up or go down. They don't stay the same. And so trying to create this incentive program that also has the benefit of differentiating our housing stock felt compelling as a way to do that, particularly at a point in time when costs are going up pretty significantly, and smaller retailers and independent operators in particular are fighting very hard to absorb those costs. So that, that is, again, why we were focused on the investment in the space, which then continues on to future tenants. It's not just about the first tenant, it's about the longer term of that commercial space.
Well, I understand that part of the, you know, the, the, it's a very, I think it's very well put together, very, very thoughtfully done. What I'm really interested in is, and I think you've answered my question when you say that attractiveness is very much dependent, very sensitive to interest rates. We've just gone through, as you know, a fairly, a fairly idiosyncratic process of getting the zoning changed along Harvard Street for four stories. If we made a mistake, and we should have gone for five stories, which I don't know would have passed, then we have to, you know, we have to say, well, okay, what do we do next? But if it's possible to bring things back down so that, or rates come down so that four stories become attractive again, then we haven't made a mistake. And that remains to be seen, obviously, what happens with rates and what happens with construction costs. But it's interesting to hear the sensitivity analysis was done and what the results were.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have a noise bylaw waiver hearing for Coolidge Corner Theater. We have someone in the audience who's gonna tell us what kind of noise you're gonna make?
Yeah. Can you hear me? This is Jennifer Depazo Gilbert.
Hello, Jennifer.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, thank you. I didn't know that I had been promoted. I believe Jay Hershey, your water and sewer director may be available as well. And also Michael Allen, who is the general contractor for the Coolidge Corner Theater project, which is finished, but there is some utility work that needs to be completed. This particular work, the town would like, the town's DPW would like to happen in the evening, so that there will be less disruption. And it includes cutting and capping an old water main, water line, and doing the work in the roadway under the direction and supervision of the Water and Sewer Division, Jay Hershey, the director. And I know that the general contractor and his utilities subcontractor, Genesis Utilities, have been coordinating this work. The subcontractor is ready to go next week, but we need to coordinate that with the town, make sure that it happens during the overnight hours. And so the request is for a waiver from the noise bylaw, which prohibits this type of construction and demolition work in the roadway beyond 7:00 PM. And this would be in the evening, so that it's less disruptive. The water line would be shut down temporarily and then put on again, so that those folks with, without water temporarily would have it again in the morning. And so that's the request. And the subcontractor is ready to go next week. But again, that work has to be coordinated with the town's Water and Sewer Division. So we would ask for permission. The work should only take two to three evenings maximum, and it can start as early as next week.
I have two questions. First of all, are there, I don't think there are any residential properties in this area. And secondly, will the cutoff of the water line affect any residential properties that are out in the outer lying areas?
I don't believe it does, but I would let Jay answer that.
Sure. Yeah, that particular stretch is mostly commercial. We haven't identified any residential. And it's, the shutdown would actually take the units that are like 274 to 292 out of service temporarily. And it's my understanding.
What's 274?
274 is right there on.
You mean 274 Harvard?
Yeah, the 292. It's actually a very short little run that we're able to isolate and temporarily shut down.
How about, how about restaurants?
There are, I believe, the pizza places there. So we would plan on actually not shutting the water down until close of business.
Okay.
So that commercial entities wouldn't be impacted.
Good.
Any other questions? Any other explanations? Okay, this is a public hearing. Tiffany, could you see if there's anyone on the Zoom audience that would like to speak? I don't see anyone raising their hands in our real audience.
So far, no one is raising their hands in the virtual meeting.
Okay, so let's close the public hearing. Any other questions from the select board?
Actually, a hand raised. Is it too late?
No, we'll, we'll make an exception.
To promote. David Leschore, Lescolier. David, you should be able to unmute now.
Thank you. I almost missed it. So thank you. I just have a few comments I distributed to the select board.
Okay, David, this, this is a noise bylaw waiver hearing. It's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll come back. I'll come back to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Stick around.
Any other hands raised?
There are no others.
Okay. Good. Unless there are any questions from the select board, I'll move approval of the noise bylaw waiver request from the Coolidge Corner Theater related to water main service. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyek?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
And next, we have another public hearing, water and sewer rates. And we have Erin Chute at the microphone to start us off here.
That sounds great. Good evening. My name's Erin Chute. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. And.
We are not necessarily voting tonight, or are we, or do you want us to vote?
We'd love for you to vote this evening. Typically, we do. Typically, we provide the information in advance. Then we have a public hearing. And barring any concerns following that, the select board generally takes a vote.
Yeah, I don't, don't think that there can be any concerns, but.
All right. So if we could go ahead and share the slides, that would be great. But I'll, I'll just get started with an introduction. So again, good evening. My name's Erin Chute. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works. We're here this evening to present the annual Water and Sewer Fee Structure and Rate Increase for FY '25. We present the upcoming fiscal year fees to the board for your approval and vote at a public hearing mid-June every year. In the annual, at this meeting, the select board review and vote, it follows a rigorous budget review with the advisory committee, department budget presentation to the select board, which we've already done, budget approval by town meeting, our MWRA final assessment to all participating municipalities that generally comes into us late spring, review, discussion, vote, and recommendation by the water and sewer rate task force, and advertisement in the Boston Herald, which we do for 21 days. Generally, we actually make that a month, posting on the town's calendar and Water and Sewer webpage. And also, I sent a direct email to all town meeting members asking that they share the information with their constituency for this evening's hearing. We work on our budget through the calendar year, the full calendar year with projections, and then finalize the rates once those MWRA assessments are complete. So I'm here with our Water and Sewer Director, Jay Hershey, who will be available to answer any questions you may have. And I'd also like to recognize our Water and Sewer Rates Task Force, who meet several times throughout the year to review the budget, discuss usage trends, look at reserve balances, and set rates for the upcoming year. And what we're presenting is our collective recommendation that they voted on. The following individuals represent different water and sewer customers. They care about the reliability and importance of the service that we provide, and consider impact on customers. So that's David Lescolier, Ernie Frye, Tom Elwartowski, Linda Pelkey, and Dick Benka. So I'm going to provide a recap, kind of at a high level, on the overall water and sewer budget. This budget was presented with our budget book submittals and in multiple public forums leading up to town meeting. So I think with that, if we can go to maybe full screen here, it looks like this is not in the format that I would generally present this. We could do the full, and then we can just forward it. So the, the budget that we have for the full Water and Sewer Enterprise is 33.4 million. This represents a 2.76% increase over last year, which we're actually pleased about that and how we've been able to manage costs. The increase that we have in salaries represents contractual increases. We've also moved the environmental engineer position into the Water and Sewer Enterprise. This position focuses mainly on all matters associated with stormwater and environmental regulatory compliance. In services, we see an increase largely with catch basin disposal, catch basin cleaning disposal, and also dig safe services. This is required in terms of utility service markouts. For us, it's water, sewer, stormwater. It also applies to gas, electrical cable, et cetera, for safe excavations. Supplies, minor increase due to inflation. We have our reserve, which is we shoot for at least 1% of the budget to help ensure we have a financially responsible reserve for the Water and Sewer Enterprise. Budgeted capital is for vehicles and equipment replacement. And then debt service, this increase here is associated with our sewer lining work, water meter replacement and stormwater work. And I'll just say that we're really maximizing our ability to utilize grants and 0% loans from the MWRA. So really stretching the town's dollars with the rate payers dollars. And then the interfund transfer is the formula. We have to cover indirect expenses associated with the Water and Sewer Enterprise. This is legal services, treasurer and comptroller services, and the full suite of benefits for all water and sewer employees. And so if we look at this, just in terms of a snapshot of the overall percentages, the makeup of the pie chart doesn't actually very much year to year. About 70% of the budget is the MWRA assessment, and the remainder of the budget covers our costs to provide all the services associated with providing high quality water, servicing the overall network, and maintaining the infrastructure within the town. So for our presentation of the rate study, I'd like to introduce our financial analyst and consultant, David Fox from Raftellus. He's an economist and expert in water and sewer utility with national experience. He helped the town develop its current rate model and has worked for, with us for years on a financial stability plan and reaching our goal for a healthy enterprise fund that helps us maintain the critical infrastructure and services required of the town, and also plan for the future. So with that, Dave is going to go over our, our plan and our recommendation. And from there, we'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here again. My name is Dave Fox, Vice President with Raftellus. I've been working with the town for a number of years now. Raftellus is the largest firm in the country predominantly focused on water and sewer rate and financial planning related matters. And it's certainly my area of expertise. I know you were already deep into your agenda. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. But I did want to kind of, for those of you that are around last year, you saw this. But for anybody who wasn't, and for those that are listening at home, I wanted to provide a little bit of an overview of what a rate study is, why we go through this process on an annual basis, what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to ensure the long term financial sustainability of both the Water and Sewer Funds for the town, which will in turn allow for the long term operational sustainability, to have reliability and quality service, water and sewer for all of the residents within the town. In doing so, we also want to look at what are the impacts to customers? Our predominant revenue source is your residents paying water and sewer bills. And we want to understand what those impacts are to those customers over time. Just to provide a little bit of context here, so you have an idea of some of the industry trends when we get to the point where we're making our recommendations. Water and sewer rates across the country have been increasing over the last 20 to 25 years by about 5 and 6% respectively, every single year, more than twice the rate of inflation. And that's predominantly due to recently inflationary impacts, especially here in New England, aging infrastructure, the need to renew and replace that infrastructure to maintain quality and reliability of service, and per capita reductions in per capita consumption, which in turn reduces the revenue stream when customers are using less. I'll just briefly talk about the, the plan that we go through. Several years ago, we had, we developed a financial planning and rate model for the town, looking at its water and sewer operating expenses, annual debt service payments, future capital needs, how those projects are going to be paid for, how revenues are coming in. This model is updated annually. We also take into consideration fund balance, which Erin mentioned previously. And I'll get into that in just a slide, in a slide or two, trying to maintain some reserve fund balance and a fund balance for financial viability purposes. This model allows us to look over a typically a five year window. The model goes out much further than that. But once we get outside of that window, the crystal ball gets really hazy. So we want to focus on the next five years, playing with the best information we have today and understand how much we think rates need to increase by annually to support the financial plan and maintain financial sufficiency. And this should be updated annually. I was here last year, or I think I was on Zoom last year. This should be an annual process to understand how things are changing, because the forecast of where we thought we were going to be here in fiscal year 2025 last year has changed for the positive, which is a fantastic thing. That's why we want to update these, these models and this financial plan annually to understand how things are changing. So to summarize what our assumptions are and our general recommendations, we are recommending a 3.5% across the board increase to the town's water and sewer rates. We're assuming that there will be no reserve funds utilized to offset the rate increase. Actually, the opposite is happening. We are contributing more money to the reserve funds, something that, a plan that we set forth a few years ago, trying to build the reserve funds up for reasons that I'll explain on the next slide. Again, I mentioned before, these plans should be updated annually. And one thing that I will mention, or two things, one is when I was giving this presentation last year, we forecasted out where we thought we would be a year from, from where we were fiscal year 2025. And that rate increase, we actually thought we were going to have is a 4.5% rate increase. So it's fantastic that we're here. You know, Water and Sewer Department, DPW has done a wonderful job of keeping costs low. And the fact that we're sitting here recommending something less than, than what we thought we were a year ago is fantastic. And in doing so, we also took a look at how customers are billed. If you remember correctly, you have a inclining block rate structure for single family residential. for single-family residential customers, and then a uniform volumetric rate for all non-single-family, all other non-single-family residential customers. We went through and did just an audit of how customers were classified to make sure that they're being billed correctly. And we've made those changes and will be starting to bill on them this upcoming fiscal year. And we factored in the changes to the revenue requirements accordingly. Just a few things on operating reserves. We're going to talk about how we're seeing these operating reserves build up over time. This allows for the Water and Sewer Fund just to maintain more financial self-sufficiency and sustainability. It allows us to not have to deviate from what our initial plan was of having moderate to low-stable increases every single year, without fluctuations from year to year, which can create some rate shock on customers. We want to try to maintain that stability of that financial plan as much as possible. And by having some money in a reserve fund, it allows us to do that. It does that through one-time capital expenditures that pop up that we were not planning for. We can utilize some of those reserve fund balances. Or in a year where our consultant declines meaningfully and our revenue declines meaningfully, we have some reserve funds to balance. Don't have to have a mid-year rate increase or deviate from what our rate increases are too significantly. We are recommending reserve fund balances that are typically higher than what a general fund would hold. But that is industry best practice for an enterprise fund that is predominantly funded through consumption and demand that is more volatile or significantly more volatile than, you know, ad valorem taxes or something of that nature, which is incredibly fixed. This is our cash flow, assuming 3.5% rate increases annually. Obviously, we're only asking for a vote on fiscal year 2025, a 3.5% rate increase. But this model is actually assuming 3.5% rate increases from 2026 through 2029 as well. But we will continue, as I mentioned before, to update this model annually to understand where things have changed, what might change over time, and come back and make some recommendations to you based on the best information for that upcoming fiscal year. And what you can see is, every single year from 2025 out through 2029, our revenues are actually generating a bit more than what our revenue requirements or our costs are in those years, which are indicated by the columns. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see that where our fund balance for water and sewer is starting to grow over that period and getting up to where our target is of about 90 days of operation and maintenance expenses. I know on the tail end of this forecast, we are getting a little bit above what our target is. We had conversations with DPW Water and Sewer, as well as the Water Rates Task Force. And we determined that we were able to actually, we've been kind of moving in this direction to get up to that target level. And we thought it might take us through 2028 or so to get to that point. But maintaining a 3.5% increase is allowing us to get there a little bit faster. And if we get there, given that we're going to update these rate increases annually, if we get there by the 2027 time period and we don't need that 3.5% rate increase, we will make that recommendation and not have that 3.5% rate increase and kind of sustain where we are. So we're trying to be, while having less rate increase than we thought we were going to a year ago, get to our target level a little bit faster to maintain that financial viability and that financial sustainability. A few slides here that are going to get a bit repetitive. I wanted to show what the bill impact are for a few customers, starting with a low-volume residential household using about 900 cubic feet. 100 cubic foot is about 748 gallons per quarter with a 5/8 inch meter. All of these customers are experiencing a 3.5% rate increase, but they're going to experience different magnitudes. For example, this customer is currently spending about $737 per year for water and sewer service combined. That same bill with the 3.5% increase is going to increase to $763 approximately. It's about a $26 per year increase, $6.45 per quarter, $2.15 per month, or to break it even down to a daily basis, a 7 cent increase per day, or about 3.5%. A typical volume household, a typical volume residential customer using 1,800 cubic feet, you could see same 3.5% increase, about a $3.50 per month increase on this customer in 2025, going from about $1,188 to $1,230 or so. The out years are showing you what those increases are. Again, as I mentioned, with the best information we have today, we are forecasting about 3.5% increases. But we will continue to come back to you with recommendations for 2026 and beyond. High-volume household, I told you these are going to get repetitive. I apologize, but we wanted to break this down and show you. All of these customers are experiencing, because we are doing an across-the-board increase of 3.5%, their bills are going up 3.5%. The only difference is the magnitude of dollars. Obviously, a higher-volume customer is spending more based on their consumption. They're going to have a higher dollar amount increase. This customer, a high-volume residential customer using about 36, or double what a typical residential customer uses, is seeing about a $7 per month increase in both its combined water and sewer bills from 2024 to 2025. And finally, a typical, it's really hard to define what a typical is. We looked at kind of average consumption and average meter size for a non-single-family residential customer. The average consumption is about 40 CCF per quarter with a 1-inch meter. You could see still a 3.5% increase here. This customer's bill increased by about $8.32 per month or just under $100 per year in fiscal year 2025. Something that I always get asked to do, I don't love doing this because I think that a community should make a decision based on its water and sewer rates, based on what is right for that community, not compared to what other communities are doing. But I'm always asked to provide this slide. And actually, it looks pretty favorable here in Brookline. This is a typical residential bill at the 1,800 cubic feet per quarter and a 5/8 inch meter. At several communities, including where Brookline is currently, in 2024 at $1,188, where they will be with a 3.5% increase at $1,230, compared to, starting at Boston, all the way through Melrose at the highest of the far right end of this. And one thing I will mention is that many of these communities, it does not take into consideration any rate increase that they're going to have for fiscal year 2025 either. A lot of these are fiscal year 2024 rates. And the proposed Brookline fiscal year 2025 rate is still below many of these other communities. This is the recommended vote, broken down by category, the actual rates themselves that we would ask you to vote on with a 3.5% increase. The water rates, as you could see there on the top of the screen I mentioned before, for single-family residential customers, there is that inclining block rate structure. Once you get over 1,800 cubic feet, the volumetric charge increases. And then for all other customers, it is a uniform rate, whether they use 100 cubic feet or 1,100 cubic feet, they would pay the same volumetric charge. Sewer is exactly the same, a uniform rate for all customers. Then we have a quarterly fixed charge based on meter size. And then some miscellaneous charges, one being just fire service charges, which is incredibly common miscellaneous charge or ancillary charge for the industry. I'll pause here. I don't know, Aaron, if you want me to stay here. That's really all we have left. Okay, we'll stay here and take any questions. Thank you for your patience. Hopefully, I got through that efficiently enough for you.
Any questions from the Select Board? I'm sorry, John?
Should we ask for just a summation of also the report on the possibility of a subsidy program?
Is that really relevant to this discussion?
I had thought that it was done by the same person who's the speaker.
I believe it was, but you want to speak on that?
I'm anticipating we're going to get a question.
Yeah, we'll get a question. Why don't we wait for that question and then respond to it? Could you see if David LaScolia is ready to?
Yes. David, I'm going to promote you.
So why don't, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing. And David LaScolia would be the first speaker.
David, you've been promoted. You should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, David Fox, for a really impressive presentation. And as I mentioned in the memo that I emailed that I sent to the Select Board, I think yesterday, there's been, over the last 10 years since we started having these hearings, a tremendous amount of progress. And I'm so privileged and grateful, actually, to have the opportunity to be on the Sewer and Water Task Force. It's sort of like a dream assignment, where we can actually make a difference. And I want to make clear, I support, Louis, David Fox's Department of Public Works recommendation for 3.5% rate increase. But I wanted just to mention, it's not really exactly on your vote. But at the same time that the recommendations came out, Raftellus also provided a report, as was requested by the Select Board last year. And I think that is going to be just for our mill. It's called the June 4th Affordability Report. And I'm a bit concerned about it, and I wanted to just throw this out, not that I can really do anything about it tonight. But according to the Brookline Community Foundation, as I outlined in what I sent, Brookline is not a low-burdened community for 25% of its residents. I'm a bit concerned that the conclusion was low burden. It's sort of like the wrong message or inappropriate message. But tonight, we're not, don't need to and shouldn't be getting into the weeds other than to say more work is needed on this. And I hope that the Water and Sewer Task Force will continue to work toward feasible affordability recommendation. We agree about our values. And the first step is to solving the problem is to acknowledge the problem, which is why I'm speaking tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
There are six participants, and no one else is raising their hand.
Before I get to you, Regina, do you want to respond to David LaScolia's comments?
I believe the Select Board received my response to your email. Okay, you received that.
But for a vast TV audience.
For your vast TV audience, I understand Mr. LaScolia's point. I think we're talking a bit apples and oranges in terms of nomenclature of high burden versus low burden. We relied upon industry best practices that are adopted by industry associations across the country with regard to water and sewer to, to the best degree possible, provide a community-wide assessment of water and sewer affordability for the entirety of the town of Brookline. That does not mean, even though the assessment based on it a community-wide was low burden typically for water and sewer bills, that does not mean that there aren't individualized affordability concerns within the town. I can guarantee you that there are. We state that in the report. We were asked to use industry best practices to identify the community as a whole. We also spent, although the vast majority of that report is focusing on data, we spent most of our time talking about ways we could help people, help residents, low-income residents. And unfortunately, we got to the point where we didn't think that there was a viable solution for expansion of a customer assistance program that would actually be effective in providing relief to customers at this point in time. I agree with Mr. LaScolia that additional work and diligence should be done. I think a lot of that work should be done more on a community-wide, broad-spread basis. I don't think that water and sewer are going to, the Water and Sewer Department is going to alleviate poverty concerns or significant low-income concerns through its water and sewer bills. Unfortunately, I wish that were the case. I wish water and sewer bills could just be waived and poverty would be stricken. I don't think that's the case. So I know I'm getting a little long-winded here. I think a broader discussion and more in-depth discussion, which I know is not the scope of this meeting. I'd be happy to come back to a following meeting. We can get into all the details around that report, what the rationale and the reasons why we said what we did and what our recommendations were. Which, at the end of the day, I know Mr. LaScolia can disagree with the presentation or maybe how we got to our assumption that water and sewer bills are generally low-burdened for residents here in the town of Brookline. But the ultimate recommendation of not expanding the Water and Sewer Assistance Program any further was ultimately, I believe unanimously adopted or approved as well by the Water and Sewer Rates Task Force. Thank you.
You know, affordability is an incredibly important question, and we have to deal with it. My concern, though, is what are we basing that on? And maybe this is a question to David, if he's still available. In your email, you cite the Brookline Community Foundation saying that 25,000 Brookline residents who are in 25% are financially vulnerable. Now, that can't be an accurate number. That would suggest that we have 100,000 population, which we don't. So I'd like to actually ask him if he could explain what that number is and where it came from, and why it's even relevant.
Well, what you see in what I wrote is direct quotes from the Brookline Community Foundation Summer 2023 Understanding Brookline Report. And the 25% represents about, what? 5,000 households, 15,000 residents. That's what we're dealing with. And I agree with David Fox that water and sewer is a small part of that. And in itself cannot alleviate that. But we need to look at it in the context of our affordability. And it has to do with a large portion, much larger than we even acknowledge, of residents that are having trouble making ends meet at the end of every month. And it's because of the escalating housing costs. And water and sewer costs are passed on into rents by landlords, obviously. So that has some impact on the situation.
You know, look, this is a very serious problem. And if it's really serious, we have to make sure that the data we're using is accurate. And I don't, I'm asking about what you put in your email, that 25,000 Brookline residents are financially vulnerable. I'd like to know where that came from. It doesn't even make sense.
Sounds like he just made a mistake. He meant to say 25% of 25,000.
25%.
Of 25,000.
But even 25,000 residents, that's half of Brookline's population.
Yeah, I mean, he said his comment right now was 15,000 residents, 5,000 households. Maybe it's a typo.
So if I may.
25%, 25%. I have the report right here. I suppose if I start my video, I can show it.
Maybe, David, if I could just for a moment. So in the report that we worked on, we actually looked at all census data. We looked at income. We, I mean, the analysis was very thorough in terms of the population in Brookline and looked at other programs that were out there that were providing assistance through a whole host of different mechanisms. I think that Mr. LaScolia does not disagree at all and actually was in agreement with the recommendation, not only for the rates, but also for any change in an assistance program at this time. But his concern is largely on the wording used in the report around affordability, which is an industry standard that the economists use when they're talking big picture about water utility. And I think David very rightly wants to make sure that there is no misunderstanding, that there's still need in Brookline that we want to continue to explore, which we will do. And so, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. In my comments, I talked about the macro view, which is what David Fox explained. And I actually took the charts, four of the charts, A, B, C, and D, and adapted them to a micro-examination using Brookline's numbers coming right out of the American. and adapted them to a micro examination using Brookline's numbers coming right out of the American Community Survey. I looked at the census. The numbers I have there are consistent, which you'll find on table 2503. So, uh, you know, it's 25% and it's, um, and Erin has it exactly right. I mean, you know, just, uh, what I was really reacting to is saying low burden. We need, we need to acknowledge it's not low burden for certain people. And an industry community wide standard is fine. I don't dispute that. I don't dispute David Fox's methodology and it's, it's industry standard. What I tried to do is adapt it to look specifically at Brookline and Brookline situation. And I plugged in those numbers in, at least for the, uh, lowest quintile, the lowest 20% of Brookline's residents, uh, it's not low burden, it's high burden. Using the formulas and charts that, uh, uh, were provided in that report. So, yeah, it's just sets an agenda and says that we still have work to do, which we all know. And we all agree about it. We all coming with the same set of values.
And we'll continue to work on this, um, the Department and the task force.
My only concern is that we, we really base our work on accurate numbers and, and, you know, too often I see numbers coming out of the Brookline Community Foundation that just don't make any sense. I mean, yeah.
There's another hand up.
Remember, I went back to David's, uh, report and I also went to the tables that he used from the American Community Survey 2023 to verify. So the numbers I have that I cited are very close to the numbers you saw in his presentation.
We have another hand up?
Yes, we do. Richard Benka, I'm promoting you now. You should now be able to unmute and share your video if you're comfortable.
Thank you. I may have to lose my video if, uh, I get frozen. I've, um, I've had internet connection problems and I've gone to a different room. I, I am not going to, uh, talk about David Lescogier's analysis. It's not necessary to do that at this point. For a couple of reasons. First of all, as, uh, David has indicated, it's not part of the vote today. Secondly, the task force, which we both sit on, was made aware from the get-go of both administrative and legal issues. The administrative problems with, um, dealing with subsidies for low income renters. Uh, and the, what's really a non-starter, uh, and that is the Department of Revenue's view that it would be illegal to use the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to subsidize low income customers. So that, um, uh, that from the get-go, um, really, uh, closed the door to some significant changes in what we're doing now in the town. And it's not part of the vote today. Uh, it can't be part of the vote today as, as a legal matter. And I think that should be the end of the matter for the purpose of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the Select Board? Oh, I'm sorry. Regina? And do you want to speak?
No. Thank you. Regina Farley from South Brookline, uh, where we have single family homes. Except for Hancock Village. That said, I believe I want to just speak common sense here because I don't think all this, uh, survey information gives you the real picture. There's only one of you up there who owns a home and pays your own water and sewer bill directly. So it's possible some of you don't understand how they really impact. So for example, if I get $10 worth of water, listed clearly on my bill, and that's not an unusual number for me. I will, a few years ago, it would be double, exactly double for the sewer. Quietly, it's now triple. So $30 will be for the sewer. $10 for the water, yes. And finally, there are the so-called base charges that used to be called the meter, water meter charges. And that's another $80. So what my $10 water bill is really closer to 120 and I could bring the bills and improve it. So when you're talking about the low income or low impact, it really, it doesn't reflect what people are actually paying for the water bills. And these are all the gift of the selectmen's decisions over the last 20 years. Let that sink in. These are decisions you guys made, not just on the water structure and what we owe the MWRA. This is a, how do we pay the bills? Well, let's have a water meter, uh, section. Let's also have a base charge for the sewer. I took a course once at Harvard on how property taxes came about. And they started in the Middle Ages when cities began to be the place where, uh, deviants, if you want to use that right technical term, uh, would leave their fiefdoms and be kicked out usually, and they formed cities. Well, cities needed garbage collection. They needed water. So, uh, a well might be in the center of, of housing in, um, in London or Paris. So you provided that, then they had offal and other trash and that had to be taken away. And that was the justification for, um, property taxes. We get nothing now in our property taxes. This is now sewer used to be deductible in my property taxes and I only paid for water. None of it's deductible now. So that, I remember being at a meeting at the Select Board at a four o'clock meeting when Andy Papa Sturgeon, the Water Commission, the Director of Water then, um, said that in 20 years, it'd be $1,000 for a family of four. It's $1,000 for a family of one. As long as you keep using this as the cash cow it is, there's no end to increasing. What was a $35 surcharge was now $38, both on water and sewer base charges. I mean, it just no end to it. There's, you really have to understand the impact of the people you're elected to serve. And that all of these decisions were made right there on the sixth floor by decisions on how to pay the bills. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I really want to use the, the word moo because it's a cash cow.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, this is still an open public hearing. Anyone else, uh, looking to?
There is no one else raising their hand.
Okay. Any further discussion from the Select Board?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. You're ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Well, let's vote. So it's about to do. Okay, uh, we have a full page of votes. Uh, Erin, do you want me to read through each vote? Um, except for, uh, item two. I mean, it won't, won't take much time to do that.
I think, uh, Town Administrator Carrie, is there a way to simplify the vote?
Yes. Do you want to put the vote back up on the screen? Um, we can, uh, we'll unpin. Mr. Banka, we'll repin that.
Actually, I can read this fairly quickly, except item two, I'd want to just refer to the schedule.
I mean, I think you can say, you know, you refer to the, um, it's up to you, you know, you have
Yeah. Okay. Let, let me just start right. Uh, I move approval of quarterly water and sewer rates effective July 1st, 2024. Uh, as, uh, indicated in the schedule on the, uh, materials in our packet with respect to water rates, uh, and with respect to sewer rates. That sufficient for the Select Board?
Yes.
Okay. And it's also up on the board there, or on the screen. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Uh, number two, I move approval of the quarterly base charge based on meter size according to the following schedule, effective, uh, July 1st, 2024. And the schedule is the schedule in the packet and also up on the screen with respect to meter size, water quality size, uh, a charge and quarterly sewer base charge. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. To approve the quarterly irrigation rate of $6.49 per 100 cubic feet effective July 1st, 2024, um, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh, John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Uh, Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. To approve the annual fire service char, uh, service charge of $23.15 per inch diameter squared of fire service pipe size effective July 1st, 2024. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. To continue the senior water and sewer rate discount program in an amount equivalent to 50% of the water and sewer base charge for eligible rate payers with eligibility for said program determined by eligibility for property tax exemptions allowable under Massachusetts general laws. Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17D, uh, 41A, 41C, and the Senior Tax and Senior Work Off Tax Program. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then just for information, the above rates, uh, votes are set under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40, Section 22F. And that, um, in, in total is a recommended vote for water and sewer rates of 3.5%.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Wasn't that difficult or painful?
It was poetry.
Not sure it's poetry, but thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, public hearing, another public hearing, noise bylaw waiver for the MBTA. K5 Corporation under contract with the MBTA requests a noise bylaw, um, waiver uh, for night pavement markings, uh, installation as part of the Gateway East Bus Pilot Project. It's restripping and re-timing. Is there anyone here to, to explain that and, and let us know more?
Uh, if you're here on this, uh, noise bylaw waiver and you're present remotely, can you please raise your hand?
Dan Murphy is raising his hand. I'm promoting him to co-host now. Dan, you should be able to unmute and share your video.
Hi, uh, my name is Dan Murphy. I'm the Director of Engineering and Transportation. I'm here tonight with Alex Halliwell and Eileen Batty from the MBTA. And, uh, we're here to request a, uh, a waiver from the noise control bylaw uh, for Gateway East work, uh, on Washington Street. And, uh, we'd like to do, the, the work would take about 10 nights. We're looking for five weeks from 6/24 to June, July 31. Uh, it's for painting work and there'll be some, uh, noise, minor noise. It's relatively based, based on air compressor noise intermittent and some from the use of the electric leaf blowers. But I'll, I'll let, uh, Alex, Renner and Eileen provide you more details with the request. If you could unmute them and let them speak on it, that would be great.
Hi, good evening.
Alex? Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Eileen Batty with the MBTA, Project Manager. Um, as Dan mentioned, we're seeking, um, a waiver for the noise bylaw, um, specifically in regards to some of the intermittent use of, um, in a compressor and an electric blower uh, to assist with the pavement markings installation, um, with the red bustling paint. Um, and so, uh, we've attached some details to the request, uh, but just to quickly recap what that is. Um, there's, um, a bit of intermittent use throughout the surface preparation, um, the application of the paint itself and then the cleanup. Um, so it will generate some noise, um, on and off throughout the process, uh, but it isn't continuous. Um, and this is again, as Dan mentioned, to start, uh, June 24th, um, and expected a 10 evening duration. Um, but seeking a window to July 31st, um, on the unforeseen circumstances that it needs to be extended. Um, we wouldn't expect it to take more than 10 nights total. Um, and we're happy to take any questions, um, or explain the process a bit further.
Do you, um, have you taken any measurements of the potential decibel levels at the various residential properties nearby? I mean, there are a lot.
Uh, I don't believe we have that level of detail, um, available for the decibel. And just to mention, this is, as I said, it is intermittent. Um, and as requested by the town, um, we're seeking to do the overnight work so as not to impact traffic, uh, during the daytime hours. Um, and just to efficiently move the project along on a quicker timeline. Um, it will take fewer nights, uh, than the amount of days it would take, if that helps to give some context.
So do you, do you have any sense of the decibel level of your compressors and other equipment?
I don't have the decibel levels, um, available with me tonight. Um, it is an electric blower, um, for the town's, uh, request for equipment previously, um, from what I'm aware of, um, from some previous projects.
I, I guess my question, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a serious problem because the residential properties are pretty far away, but we will be asked about this. So it'd be good to have a sense of, you know, what, what, how much noise we're talking about, even if it's not going to be noise that's going to bother people.
Sure. Uh, Erin Chu, Commissioner of Public Works, thanks for being here this evening to present, um, to the Select Board. So I just would like to let everyone know that we typically do all of our painting overnight. So all of the painting, the, um, when we do sort of full construction projects and we're repainting a roadway, the annual painting that we're doing on your center lines, um, the bike lanes, the, uh, symbols, the crosswalks. Generally, unless we're working with the community and doing our rainbow crosswalks, these are all done, um, at night. And so, um, it's, you know, an operation that is generally done during that time, but because this is a little more concentrated, it's a little more paint, honestly, with these bus lanes that have that full, um, sort of brick red color. We just wanted to be really mindful of, of coming before the Select Board for the noise bylaw waiver. We're working on a press release right now. And so I'd be glad to include some information in that in terms of what the community can expect, um, during that, uh, the, the time, um, when the lanes are being, uh, prepared. And, uh, you know, in terms of decibels, I don't have that off the tip of my brain in terms of the, you know, the battery operated electric, uh, leaf blowers, but it's generally a relatively low decibel.
Any other questions?
No, I'm usually the, uh, the one who, uh, gets very concerned about, uh, noise and noise bylaws, but I, I, there's no alternative here. So.
No, I, I'm not suggesting it, but I think people will want to know, you know, the answer to that. So it makes sure that, that some information with respect to the decibel level, levels, uh, is included in the press release so that, you know, those who are curious or those who are, you know, think that they're particularly sensitive to noise, you know, will know.
Very good. We'll take care of that.
There's really only one, um, residential building that's probably going to be close to this. And that's the new building at Route 9 and High Street. I mean, at the BHA properties are sort of a block away and the, the, uh, Brook houses are a block away. There. Okay. Any, uh, other questions? This is, uh, is this a?
Yes.
It is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Um, uh, Tiffany, do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. There's no one raising their hand at this time.
Okay, uh, we'll close the public hearing. And unless there are any other questions, uh, call for a vote. Um, I move approval of the, uh, noise bylaw waiver for the MBTA, uh, painting project on, uh, Washington Street at, at Route 9. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Did you have a question, John?
No, no, no.
Uh, John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
David Pearlman?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you. And thank you to, um, Dan and Eileen as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The last item on our agenda, uh, was proposed by Mike Sandman, um, which is, uh, discussion and possible vote on a proposal to sponsor a facilitated public conversation on the impact on Brookline residents and events in the Middle East. Uh, Mike? Turn the, turn the, um, microphone over to you.
Okay. Thanks, Brad. Um, so the agenda item calls for a discussion of whether there's interest and support for a mediated community conversation on the Gaza War. And that was something that we talked about. and that was something that we talked about, uh, when we reconsidered our recommendation to town meeting before the, um, May town meeting, uh, took up Article 19. And, um, certainly the demonstration that took place, uh, and especially the counter demonstration at Brookline High School on May 30th, highlighted the division between proponents of a ceasefire and, and opponents. And, um, I think that we all regret that some of the counter demonstrators in particular made, uh, hateful remarks to the petitioners and their supporters. Hateful speech is protected by the First Amendment, threats of violence are not. I understand from the chief of police that her officers reported back that the comments may did not cross the line to being threats, but just the same, I think we all regret that a small number of people were unable to disagree, um, without being hateful. Having said that, the petitioners of Article 19 haven't been enthusiastic, at least at this point, about a mediated community conversation. And I think the impetus for such a conversation needs to come from the public. So I suggest that we step back and wait to see what we hear from residents and whether anyone steps forward, um, to organize something of that sort. Um, and obviously, I'm interested in hearing, hearing what my colleagues think. Separately, uh, it's really impossible for anybody who listens to the news to ignore the, um, humanitarian crisis in, in Gaza. And given that crisis, um, I circulated a draft of a possible select board resolution endorsing the position President Biden made clear on May 31st, which is that the United States urges a release of hostages by Hamas, uh, a ceasefire by both Hamas and Hamas and its allies, and provision of humanitarian aid for the civilian population of Gaza. And I'm not suggesting any action by the select board this evening, but I'd like to know whether other select board members are interested in considering a, a select board resolution supporting the president's current position. And obviously, before we vote, any resolution would have to be posted on, as part of a future agenda, perhaps on June 25th. But with that, I'm very interested in hearing what other select board members think.
Any, uh, David?
So with respect to having a public forum, I initially, as you may recall, expressed some support for that idea, but I saw it more as an opportunity to create a mechanism by which there could be a respectful dialogue between the petitioners as well as those who oppose the Warren article. Given, though, that the petitioners don't seem particularly interested in having this, uh, mediated conversation, uh, then I would not endorse having it. I don't think we need to create something that there is not a demand for. As for the resolution, uh, I do have difficulty supporting anything that uses the language ceasefire in it, uh, unless, of course, it included a, uh, immediate, um, resignation by Hamas and that they're no longer going to be in power and something to that effect. I don't anticipate that will occur, so I personally would oppose anything that includes the term ceasefire in it.
Okay. I'll just, um, you know, add to what David said. David has brought to the surface the, the issue that I anticipated we might run into, which is if we don't have agreement individually among the members of the select board as to, um, uh, where we think, um, we personally, individually, w- would be positioned on this. I don't think there's much point, for example, in having a three to one vote, you know? Uh, or a four to one vote, or a three to two vote. Uh, and, uh, you know, if we don't have unanimity, we don't have unanimity. We've already taken the, uh, opportunity as individuals to express ourselves. Those statements, I think, are still available on the town website. Interestingly enough, um, the statement I made was essentially an endorsement of, um, President Biden's position. That was shortly after October 7th. And, you know, uh, in all likelihood, I would have no objection, uh, endorsing his position today. But I'm just not sure there's a point to the select board pursuing that. I also want to say, um, just because I was, um, along with our chair, not in favor of the, um, tabling of the whole matter before town meeting, and one of the reasons I was not in favor of it was that it seemed just human nature to me that, um, this notion that was being floated of instead of doing what we were being asked to do at town meeting, which is to vote on something that was properly petitioned as part of our local democratic process, we should like defer that, table it, silence it, and then instead have a mediated conversation between the people who had petitioned town meeting and the people who were, um, trying to table the whole matter and not allow those people to speak, was, you know, was fallacious from the start. I mean, if you, if you don't allow people to speak, don't be surprised if they don't want to participate in a mediation later, and I'm not surprised at all that that is what has happened.
I'll just add that, um, you know, Mike really pointed to the key issue here, and that is, when we turn on our TV, we see dead bodies. We see bodies of children with missing limbs. You know, we, 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 we know about, you know, what happened on October 7th, and we remember the, um, the pictures of that. To talk about any resolution without talking about a ceasefire, uh, I'm sorry. And, 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 you know, we also see the need for a humanitarian, uh, humanitarian aid to a, um, area of the world that is, you know, under catastrophic conditions. So to talk about a resolution or anything without talking about a ceasefire so that we can begin to address the humanitarian crisis there makes no sense to me. But, you know, it doesn't look like we have votes for anything, so, um, that's kind of beside the point. I, I do want to mention, you know, my, I'm really, really concerned about some of the hateful, um, remarks that I'm told were, were made at the, um, standout, uh, before town meeting. I did not, um, you know, observe that, uh, but I've been told, um, you know, some of the things that have happened, um, or that other people observed. And I just want to remind people, you know, when you start, when, when you, when you, um, give credence to hateful language, to hate of any sort against, in this case, people who are supporting a ceasefire, because hatred is indivisible, you're also giving support to hate that would be directed against other, uh, other, other people. You know, hatred against, uh, people calling for a ceasefire or, you know, people who are Palestinians or people who are Jewish means hatred against Jews, Palestinians and others. There is no separation between hate for one group and hate for another group. And I, I just hope that people who, 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 you know, express and, you know, who, who've told people that I know who are Jewish, uh, that they were anti-Semitic because they, they didn't go along with some, you know, uh, required way of thinking. I hope they just remember that, you know, by encouraging hate in one area, they're encouraging it elsewhere, and it's, it's just unacceptable, and, uh, you know, I, I would have hoped that we were much more educated and thoughtful community than maybe we are, so. David?
I, I would certainly agree with you that we should never condone expressions of hatred in any which direction, but by the same token, I wouldn't want the statements of a relative view to represent an entire political movement for or against a particular Warren article. There were a lot of thoughtful, well-intentioned people on every side of this, and so I, I do get a little bit of concern, I'm not saying you're doing this, if we brand people too broadly based on the actions of a few. But I do certainly agree with you that we do not want to be a community that supports hate speech of any kind.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that, you know, or, or branding, you know, broadly, um, you know, people who, uh, you know, had a position one way or the other. But, you know, whenever, whenever, whenever hate appears, we have to say it's not acceptable. Any other discussion of this, or is this the end of our meeting?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering whether, just as I think it's the end of the meeting, but, um, I'm just wondering whether a resolution focused on that might be appropriate, and we can think about that one. We don't need to do that right away.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I don't know what other people think. I mean, I think that that's perfectly acceptable, but in terms of the process, why don't you draft something?
Yeah.
And, um, you know, have Tiffany circulated to the select board, um, and, uh, see what happens. I, I see that, um.
I, I, sorry, I do take John's point. I agree with you, John, and, and I understand your, your perspective that, um, something that isn't unanimous, a resolution of this sort that isn't unanimous is not appropriate. Absolutely.
I see, uh, Scott Gladstone's, uh, at the mic.
What you can, you can do, even though it's not technically a public hearing, you can say, it'd be public comment.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Okay, this is public comment at the end of the meeting.
Perfect.
And, uh, Scott Gladstone, then Regina has her hand out.
Great. Scott Gladstone, town meeting member, precinct 16. So I want to thank David Pearlman for, uh, one of the points I was going to make. You were all, the rest of you were kind of piling on a little bit. I, I am, I commend to you the, uh, very good Brookline News article, um, about the rallies where, um, I very clearly called out, um, the minority of people, um, who, as I identified, were not from Brookline. In fact, uh, it seems that most of them piled into a car from, with Rhode Island plates, who were saying things that were not only off script, but were, um, absolutely, um, things that I called out and I said were unacceptable, and I tried to corral them before I had to go into town meeting, uh, to direct their attention to the town meeting members who we were trying to persuade, rather than speaking at all to the other side for which, um, there was no, uh, useful purpose. Also in that article, though, it will point out that, um, the pro-19th side, um, later devolved into a chant that we all heard frequently at, um, Collin College campuses from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. And I, again, uh, commend you the article because I do explain how, to the ears of many, many people, that is, um, at, uh, at, at worst, um, a call for elimination of Jewish people, uh, 7 million Jews in Israel. At best, it is called for one state where, uh, there would be a, um, Arab majority, um, and then the one Jewish state where, um, Jews have self-determination and, uh, is part of their self-liberation movement, uh, would be effectively, um, changed forever. And, uh, the really valuable, um, immigration policy, which allows Jews who are in trouble around the world to be able to go to Israel and have a safe place, would effectively be shut down because the majority always wants to protect their hegemony. So, um, there's, this is complicated, right? And that's why town meeting overwhelmingly, much more than two-thirds, decided that there was plenty of conversation, there are plenty of conversations everywhere. Certainly, no one is ever silenced. You look everywhere, you see that people do not particularly feel silenced. And, uh, but they didn't want to pick winners and losers. I asked this board to support the Gladstone bursting amendment. Apparently, everybody does now, um, but, um, even I decided, well, that, if, if that's also divisive, I, I supported tabling, uh, which was successful. I appreciate where you're going. I believe a mediated talk, um, has to come from the parties. If it's imposed on the parties in a kind of neo-colonial sort of a way, then it's not be, going to be successful. It has to come from the parties. I will say that, um, the people who were sort of the leaders of the amendments and the, um, and the petition, we are talking.
You have 30 seconds.
We are talking. We recognize each other's humanities. We recognize that each other are members of this community. I celebrate that, that the town celebrated, uh, the Eid Festival. And good things can happen, but it has to pa- happen organically. It can't be imposed by people who just think that, well, if you all just got together in the same room, that's just not how it works, and please don't impose that. Thanks.
Regina?
Yes, I agree with, uh, what Chair, uh, greensided. Many, many people who dispute and dis- disagree and criticize Israel for the, uh, lack of proportionality in its response under international law, and I'm one of them, were called antisemites. Tonight, Mike referred to it as the Gaza War. I'm not sure that's accurate. It's the Hamas war with Israel, taking place mostly in Gaza. But none of us that I know of, that feel as I do, feel that it's the average, uh, Gazan citizen who's at war. And right now, they are actually quite victimized, and it is very difficult, beyond difficult, heartbreaking to see what's happening to, to them. When it came to the issue of town meeting, tabling was one issue. The subject of the warrant part was a separate issue. I was somebody who was one of the people, and Scott really made it sound like I did a bad thing. He pointed out to my whole neighborhood, I was one of 47 people who voted against, as if it was a bad thing. I wanted the opportunity for citizens to petition their government, which is in the Constitution. And I see, I saw that, uh, warrant article as a reflection of that. That's all it was. I probably was going to vote for his amendment, actually. So it had nothing to do with the content. It had to do with the ability of citizens to petition their government and, uh, they are residents of the town of Brookline and they needed to have a place to speak. And I don't know who he's talking to. Most of the Arabs that I've heard about are just heartbroken and don't know what to do about any of it. So their celebration of aid the other day, I congratulate them. They rose above any of the hurt that they felt by being tabled at town meeting. That's number one. Number two, on a different topic. If the Senate were to approve, the state senate were to approve, um, the House votes and the governor's push for housing that included a clause that said that not only would there be no zoning effective, but there wouldn't be any restrictions on parking.
You have 30 seconds.
I was hoping that you guys would get ahead of it, realize that we're a town that doesn't vote for parking on the streets, but if, if building is done in disregard to po- parking, you're going to be having to deal with the issue of parking on the street. So get ahead of it. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, comments?
There are three participants remaining online, and no one is using the raise the hand feature.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the select board?
That's all right.
I therefore declare the meeting over.